Good evening, everyone. I hereby announce that pursuant to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the notice, which was sent to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall and filed in the Township Clerk's office on October 10th, 2025. Mayor Foster?
Here.
Ms. Lamonton?
Here.
Mr. Impredudoo?
Here.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Here.
Mr. Romano?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in law, one nation under God, indivisible, created in a just cause.
Can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops who serve us tirelessly at home and abroad? Thank you. All right. Sorry we were a couple minutes late. Just handling some business upstairs, but why don't we get right into it? So we have a proclamation here from the Homedale Township Committee. Whereas Edgar Badan was honored by friends and relatives on the occasion of his 100th birthday on October 4th, and whereas he was born in Switzerland in 1925, was raised in Montreal, Canada, and lived in New York for most of his life before settling in Homedale with his wife and his daughter in 2015. And whereas Edgar worked and then became co-owner of The Marmaton French Restaurant in New York City from 1955 to 1985. And whereas after retiring and traveling, he went back to work part-time at The Rainbow Room in New York City from 1986 to 1998. And whereas in his retirement Edgar became an avid bike rider, often enjoying long rides to Thompson Park, Sandy Hook, and sometimes even Keyport Fishery for lunch. And whereas Edgar established bike and outdoor clubs in the Four Seasons community in Lakewood and in Hallendale Beach, Florida, where he spent his winters. And whereas Edgar gave up his bike riding in 2023 after an injury, but now enjoys reading books and spending time with his children and grandchild. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Township Committee of the Township of Homedale that October 4th is hereby proclaimed to be Edgar Badand Day in the Township of Homedale, New Jersey, to be commemorated by the residents thereof, proclaimed this 14th day of October, 2025. Congratulations and happy birthday. How about a picture with the committee and the family? Come on up, please.
That is nice.
You gotta tell me some stories about The Rainbow Room. Okay, Carrie, you wanna get us started?
We have a presentation.
Oh, excellent. Let's get the presentation started.
Molly?
Hello, my name is Molly Altman. I'm a junior in high school. I go to the Academy for Allied Health Sciences in Union County, and I'm currently working on my Girl Scout Gold Award, which has a lot to do with your town, Homedale, here. I don't know if you're aware, but in Homedale there's this historic cemetery called the Shank-Covenhoven Cemetery. It was established in 1698, and people were being interred there until 1898. So clearly, a lot of people are there, and from the people who settled this town in the beginning, it's very important to Homedale's history. I don't know if you recognize the last names Shank or Covenhoven or Vanderbilt or Hendrickson, but I know there are streets named after them around here due to the fact that they founded the town. And they also supported the Revolution, the Erie War, in the 1700s. My Gold Award project is giving this historic cemetery the respect it deserves by cleaning it and taking efforts to keep it clean. Right now, I've been there as of three times, and each time it has been in various states of disarray. Things are overgrown, graves, you can't really see them at all. And it's just disrespectful to the people who were so important to the history of Homedale and the history of America altogether. So I am doing a project to clean it up currently and more importantly, keep it maintained. In 1910, 70 people from that cemetery were re-interred in a nearby cemetery. Because, and I'm paraphrasing here, the people in 1910 said that it was an absolute mess in the cemetery. So this is clearly a very longstanding issue, and I'm trying to find a real solution for it. I have most of this figured out on my own, but I just need the town's help to cut down dead trees. I've organized with other people with this. This is just my presentation on it. But there are a bunch of dead trees in the cemetery, and they're at risk of falling onto the headstones, or worse, people who go visiting there. The DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the chapter in Homedale does sometimes visit the cemetery to clean it. And it would be really a tragedy if one of them got hit by a falling tree. But along with that, I would also like to know if it's possible, again, I'm organizing with other people, to get any signs placed around the cemetery to stop people from dumping their trash into a grave site. It just seems a bit disrespectful to me. I know my project might seem small, but it has a lot of personal connections. I've had people who I've never met in my life, who are much older than me, reach out to me recently and tell me that their ancestors are buried in this graveyard and that they are really appreciative of the work I'm doing. And I'm actually one of these people. My ancestors are at this graveyard. My grandmother is a direct relation to Garrett Shank, who was a patriot there. I know a lot about the history now. But I just really am passionate about my project, and I hope that you guys care too. I have flyers if you want them, but we're doing a dedication to the five patriots who we know for a fact supported the Revolutionary War that are buried in that cemetery. I don't remember the date, but I have the flyers, and that has the date.
You guys have the flyers in front of you also?
We have it.
Oh, okay, good. And so if any of you would like to show up, that would be amazing. Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely, Molly. So I was gonna ask how you, you know, obviously came about with the cemetery here in Homedale, but you explained it with your family heritage and stuff, which is pretty awesome. We have a bunch of cemeteries in town, and we've tried to make some headway in the past couple years to definitely try to get them cleaned up. So I think this is a great project. We'll definitely make sure that we get out these through all our channels. And if I'm around that day, I will certainly show up and help out as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, what's the date on that?
It's the 15th of November from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Sounds about right.
Are you looking for help from, like, volunteers?
Yes, actually. We have reached out to various groups. Other Girl Scout, Boy Scout troops, and people from my school, my town, who know me and would help to help clean up the cemetery. But we're always looking for more volunteers. We have QR codes and stuff like that. If you know anyone or are interested personally, yeah.
Excellent. Molly, thank you so much. You have a great night.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
The next order of business is the approval of minutes for public and executive sessions on June 27th, 2025, July 22nd, 2025, and August 12th, 2025.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Impredudoo?
I approve June 27th, July 22nd, and I have to abstain from the 12th, as I wasn't here.
Got it. Ms. Lamonton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
I'm gonna abstain, because I do not remember. There's, I know there's one of these that I wasn't present at, but I don't know which one.
Okay. Mr. Romano?
Yes.
And Mayor Foster?
Yes.
The minutes have been successfully approved. Public comment.
Next up is a public comment for agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda items only? Seeing none, oh, no, I apologize.
This is like a quickie. I think the bonus for the administrators on the, is that on the formal agenda, or is that?
Jay.
Yeah. Hello, Jay, you know, 18 Loudwood Drive, thank you.
Yes, I believe it is.
And I have no problem with the, why, if Chris or someone deserves a bonus, can we just write him a check and say, hey, you deserve a bonus?
Unfortunately, it's part of the contract, and that's just the way it has to go through.
It has to go through that, okay. So is Chris doing a great job?
Chris is doing a fantastic job. I am very thrilled that he's here. I think all the feedback I've personally received, and I'll let anybody else chime in, but everything I've received has been extremely positive.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't questioning it.
Don't worry, he has thick skin.
Ready? Next is the consent agenda, including resolutions 2025-255 through 2025-263.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Impredudoo?
Yes.
Ms. Lamonton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mayor Foster?
Yes. Happy birthday again, Edgar. Thank you so much, guys.
Resolutions 2025-255 through 2025-263 have been successfully passed. Next is the introduction of ordinance 2025-26, an ordinance approving short-term lease agreements relative to Block 49.02, Lots 40, 40A, and 41, 117 Middletown Road/Red Hill Road. Motion is to adopt on first reading, publish in the Asbury Park Press, and set for public hearing on November 25th, 2025.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Impredudoo?
Yes.
Ms. Lamonton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-26 will be set for public hearing. Next is public hearing on ordinance 2025-23, an ordinance modifying Section 17-1 titled "Excavation in Streets."
Any public comments? Seeing none?
A motion is to adopt on final reading and publish in the Asbury Park Press according to law.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Impredudoo?
Yes.
Ms. Lamonton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-23 has been successfully passed. Next is the public hearing on ordinance 2025-24, an ordinance regarding special service charges for Open Public Records Act requests.
Any public comments? Come on up, Jay.
Jay, you know, 18 Loudwood Drive. I haven't filed one of these in a while, and I apologize, I'm reading this on the fly. I've had a crazy day, as you can tell. So we're just increasing the hourly charge? No, yeah, I'm sorry. Can you explain it real quick?
Certainly.
Because this has been a sensitive topic to some others in the audience in the past, so.
Certainly. So under the Oprah statute, a public body such as the township is entitled to impose a special services fee when an extraordinary amount of effort is required in order to review and redact the record prior to production. This has become a particular issue with respect to body-borne cameras, because a request comes in, you could have multiple officers responding to the same incident, and, you know, a relatively short incident could have hours of video. So all this ordinance is doing is basically codifying the special services charge that the law already allows for and specifying the amount that's gonna be charged in terms of hours, four hour of video. And it sets up a ratio there. And it also sets an hourly rate, which the township is allowed to charge, and I would submit is actually less than, in all likelihood, what the officer who is reviewing the footage, their salary would be, which is what the township's able to charge. So it's basically just trying to codify that process and create an understanding so that if anyone's making a request, we can point them to the ordinance so they understand how the fee is being calculated.
And is the fee for other inquiries?
No. Anything that doesn't require that extraordinary amount of effort would be produced, and the township isn't allowed to charge for production, but a video or something of that nature, it does.
And what if someone came forward with an extraordinary, unreasonable amount? Would you, and I'm not saying you shouldn't, would you stop and say, hey, we're gonna have to bill you for this?
Yeah, so normally what would happen, and the ordinance sets forth the process, but the township, when it gets a request of that nature, calculates the amount of hours it would take in order to complete the review. For instance, if it's like older records that we have in the basement, and somebody has to go through hand by hand, you know, how many hours does it take to go through a box? And it's that time, based upon the employee's rate, or in this case, the rate set in the ordinance, the requesters informed how much that fee would be. They could either place a portion of that in as a deposit to get the request fulfilled, or else the request wouldn't be fulfilled, because they didn't pay the fee.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments? Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Impredudoo?
Yes.
Ms. Lamonton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-24 has been successfully passed. Next is public hearing on ordinance 2025-25, an ordinance establishing assistant township administrator to assume duties in the absence of the township administrator.
Any public comments?
Motion is to adopt on final reading and publish in the Asbury Park Press according to law.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Impredudoo?
Yes.
Ms. Lamonton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-25 has been successfully passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Carrie, Chris, do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Mayor, it's, I have a light night tonight. I just, our engineer, Ed Herman, was away last week. He did catch up with me today. We are finishing up a few projects. Crawford's Corner still has a few projects attached to it, which would be the two crosswalks that are further down, not the one on Cat's Alley, but the other two. They are, they are gonna be done soon. We're just waiting on that subcontractor to come back and finish those. And he is also finishing up the plan for Bay Shore Sewer's Authority that allows, that says that we're up to date on our capital projects. That will be in in time for December 1st, and we won't see any fines on that. And finally, I got to attend my first Harvest Fest this weekend, and I had a fabulous time. I spent my entire day there. I don't feel well after that, though. I ate a little too much. I had a plan. The plan somewhat worked out. Ice cream was not a good idea. Thank God I didn't do that. But otherwise, it was a great time. We did have a showing of some of our township employees. Were willing to come out, and they spent the day there answering questions. And we're gonna continue to do that at all our township events now. So it won't just be, you know, vendors. It'll, we'll be out there to answer questions, and we're gonna continue to do that going forward. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Michael?
I don't have any update, Mayor, but just piggybacking on Chris, I had the pleasure of attending the Harvest Fest as well, seeing some of you. And it was a nice opportunity and a great place to bring a seven-month-old and have a little fun outside the house. So we enjoyed that.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Romano?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Starting with the library. The library remains a vital community hub with approximately 6,800 people visiting and staff answering over 1,300 reference requests this month. Adult programs like the Mahjong Club and Chess Club continue to be strong draws, while the monthly book club had 15 participants. Our children's programming remains very active, featuring 14 storytimes for 380 people, popular take-and-make crafts, we had about 350 of those taken, and engaging STEAM events that explore topics like acid-base reactions and marbleizing. Recent themes for our book displays included a 9/11 historical display, a focus on adult nonfiction, and book-to-screen titles for adult fiction. Our highly sought-after circulation display case is currently fully booked through 2025 by several local groups, with September focusing on Jewish heritage and October on Italian heritage. The library added a significant 349 new items to the collection this period, ensuring our resources remain current and comprehensive for the community. There's nothing to report from the Board of Ed and from the Veterans Committee. Homedale Township is seeking nominations for this year's Veteran of the Year. This commendation is presented annually to a deserving individual who has served in our nation's armed forces and has also made significant contributions to the community through volunteerism and service. If you know a veteran who has selflessly given their time to Homedale, please consider nominating them by sending an email to info@homdelltownship.com no later than this Friday, October 17th. Help us honor a veteran who has gone above and beyond for our community. Finally, the next Veterans Coffee and Conversations will be held on Thursday, October 23rd, at 10:30 at the Homedale Senior Community Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Lucarelli?
Thank you, Mayor. One report from the Recreation Department. We have the Senior Halloween Luncheon coming up. This is for all residents 62 and over. They are invited to attend this special luncheon. The event will be held Tuesday, October 28th, at 12:00 p.m. at the Senior Community Center. Attendees will enjoy a hot buffet lunch, fun games, and a costume contest. RSVP is required. So if you are interested in attending, please call the Recreation Office and reserve your space for that today. I'm happy to hear. I couldn't make it up at Harvest Fest. I'm just so happy that that's back on track and that we're, that we're operating that in the town. It's a great thing for Homedale. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it. But I was able to attend our Recreation Department last week. That was, that's hosted by our Recreation Director, Bob Ward. It was a full room, so every recreational component was represented. And it was, it was really nice. It was good to listen to, you know, all of the updates. And, you know, we really do have a lot going on in this town with all the different sports events and the theater. There's really a lot going on in town. So it was nice to be there, be part of it, listen to all the updates and some of the concerns. There are a few things that I do wanna meet with, you know, or bring to the Mayor's attention and our administrators' attention, that there's a few things that were brought up, but I'm gonna let that kinda go through Bob. But there was, there was one thing that I think is important for our community and regarding like the defibrillators, the AEDs at the, at some of the parks. It's been, from what I'm hearing, a request from, you know, some of these user groups for a while. And, you know, I do think it's important, you know, where they can save a life, whether it's a child or anyone, really, that's there participating or watching an event. So I think that's something that I would like to bring to your attention, Mayor and Chris, with Bob, and see if that's something that we can get budgeted. And I think they would be real happy about that. So that was really it for me.
Thank you, DJ. We will definitely speak about that, and certainly we'd get behind that as well. Mr. Impredudoo?
Thank you, Mayor. From the Homedale Police Department, following the recent storm, the recovery effort is nearly complete. As of a little more than an hour ago, Van Brackel was still reopening. Crews have set up a clear, easy-to-follow detour, but we do expect all roads to be open soon. All other roads were fully open as of 3:00 p.m. today. Power outages were minimal, with fewer than 20 customers without power, and those properties were restored as of 2:00 p.m. today. Upcoming infrastructure work. Residents should be aware of two significant projects. Homedale Road will be paved between Roberts and Main Street. Additionally, JCP&L is set to begin a major utility project running from Highway 34 to Laurel Ave, which is scheduled to continue through May of 2026. Traffic flow. The recent project to improve traffic flow around Homedale High School and SATS has been successful, fixing all related delays on Crawford's Corner Road. The new traffic lights are now fully operational. Any current delays on Homedale Road or Crawford's Corner Road are primarily due to access over by PNC, which has about 5,000 cars a day going to and from the Parkway to Crawford's Corner Road. October is also National Cyber Security Awareness Month. We encourage everyone to increase their online safety by taking simple proactive steps. The primary goal is to empower residents to protect themselves online by using strong, unique passwords and enabling multi-factor authentication. From the Homedale Fire Department, the Fire Department recently concluded a successful Fire Prevention Week open house and spent the past two weeks visiting numerous schools to teach fire safety to hundreds of local children. Thank you to all who attended our open house. The Fire Department is offering to paint house numbers on residents' curbs for a $25 donation to help first responders locate homes quickly during emergencies. Residents can call 732-946-6785 or email firechief@homdeltownship.com to arrange the service. The Fire Department is preparing for the holiday season. Please watch the Fire Department Facebook page in November for details regarding the annual Private Santa Gift Delivery fundraiser and the schedule for the public Santa runs. That is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Rocko. Deputy Mayor Lamont?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Nothing new to report this meeting from Community Development. Our Homedale America 250 Committee, they had a table set in the Red Barn at Harvest Fest this past weekend to let people know about what's planned for the upcoming year. Keep an eye out for upcoming, the upcoming presentation of Dead History on Sunday, November 16th, at the Senior Community Center. From our Homedale Green Team, the Energy Audit and Planning, the Green Team continues to advance the necessary administrative work for the local government energy audit application. Securing this audit is a crucial step in evaluating township facilities and planning for future energy efficiency and sustainability improvements. There will be an upcoming team meeting, there's actually two of them. The Community Energy Planning Team will meet tomorrow, October 15th, at 7:00 PM to continue developing our long-term energy roadmap. Following that, the next regular monthly Green Team meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 3rd, at 7:00 PM. Open invitation for public involvement. We are always open to the public. We strongly welcome any Homedale resident interested in sustainability efforts to attend. You can also send your questions or suggestions directly to the team via email at greenteam@homedaltownship.com. And from our Homedale Heritage Committee, we are gearing up for our big event on Sunday, October 26th, from 1 to 5, over at the Homedale High School. It's not too late to get your free tickets. We have over 700 tickets already reserved, and we are capping attendance at 800, so we encourage all Homedale residents and their families to secure their free reservations as soon as you can. For that event, prepare for a rich cultural and culinary experience. We are excited to announce that over 24 restaurants and shops will be on hand to provide free food samples of their famous dishes, baked goods, and non-alcoholic refreshments. There will be 11 different countries presenting their cultures and games, and there will be extensive entertainment across multiple zones, including continuous performances on the auditorium stage, solo and duo acts in the reception area, and many fun, interactive programs. You and your family will have an opportunity to watch or join teams to engage directly with different cultural experiences. I can tell you, the Harvest Fest that we just had, this Heritage Day, the number of people that come out to volunteer is absolutely amazing. And if you haven't gone to any of these events, I encourage you, just go try it out for a half hour. It, I promise you, it will be so much fun. It is such a great experience to see the community come together, and it's these sorts of events that make Homedale a place to call home. It's not just a place to plant yourself for a couple of years, so if you have a chance, go out, enjoy. And we've done, as a township, we've done the best we can to keep as much of it complimentary as possible, so go enjoy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kim, and I guess with the Heritage Festival, they better sign up soon if 700 out of 800 spots are already taken. So, as every, a few people have mentioned, the Harvest Fest was a great success. Despite the intermittent rain showers that were not in the forecast, the recent Harvest Fest was a great success. The Recreation Department estimates that approximately 1,500 to 2,000 people braved the weather to attend and participate in the evening's festivities. Attendees enjoyed a full slate of entertainment, including live music from Vinyl Traction and Joe and the Highland Express. Other popular activities included the wagon rides, petting zoo, inflatables, food vendors, and the night concluded with a screening of It's the Great Pumpkin Charlie Brown, followed by a spectacular fireworks show. This event was truly a success thanks to the collaboration across multiple departments. We publicly thank the Homedale Police, Fire and Rescue, First Aid, and Public Works Departments for their crucial support with traffic, security, fire coverage, and setup and cleanup. We also extend our gratitude to the Monmouth County Park System for providing the wagon and driver, the Borough of Tintin Falls for allowing this to use their brand-new stage, and our own Recreation Department for their intensive planning and coordination. Mark your calendars now for next year's event on Saturday, October 10th, 2026. We will be having our annual Veterans Day Ceremony on Veterans Day, November 11th. Please join us to commemorate Veterans Day and honor the brave men and women who have served our country at the annual ceremony in November. The event will feature local civic groups, each placing a wreath at the Veterans Memorial in Phillips Park. It is a powerful display of community, respect, and gratitude. This important ceremony will also include a special moment to officially recognize and celebrate our distinguished Veteran of the Year recipient, that Joe mentioned earlier. We encourage all residents to attend this meaningful tribute to show your support, respect, and appreciation for our veterans. And that is all we have for this evening. We're going to open up the microphone again for any public comments. Come on up, Mr. Yonello. Sorry, Davey beat you to it.
Jay Yonello, 18 Loudwood Drive, if Mayor Foster and everyone, if we can revisit these somewhat monster power lines. I know you met with JCPNL, and you came back here and told us that, you implied, we have a wind and we're not going to lose a lot of trees, but the height is necessary for safety reasons. So, Mr. Collins, maybe you have some insights on this. Like those giant Paralam ones that went up near those three, four million dollar houses near Mr. Lucarelli's business there? I mean, these people just built these houses, they put up two, $300,000 pools, and now they have giant Paralam power lines they're going to have, right? And now we're going to be cutting, do you know if that height is going to be consistent as we cut through toward Laurel Ave?
Chris, you met, I don't believe, obviously there's that many of them, but do you want to?
The height is going to, is the standard now, so we really had no control over the height.
Can I, can I just pause? Are you saying, or are they saying, that that height, when towns all around New Jersey start replacing meaningful sections of telephone poles, that is going to be the standard height? Because I find that hard to believe.
When they're running, when they are running newer infrastructure, they're adding more lines, so they need the height to clear the trees? So, yes, they told us, this is what they told us, that that's what's going to be the standard. It's actually the standard throughout the country now, but JCPNL is following suit. Now, when it comes to, went down 34, we're not going to be as many of those poles, but there are going to be mostly wood poles going throughout. There's a few metal poles and a couple laminate poles, and they're required because when you make turns, the tension. So, but the, most of the metal poles will be by the Garden State Parkway, and our engineer has been working with them to make sure that they limit the amount, but those are already approved by the state because they're state property. So, we're kind of stuck for whatever they, they're going to do. Again, what the mayor did say, and he fought hard for this, I was there, they're going to save the majority of the trees on South Holland. Some of the trees they are going to get rid of, the majority of the trees are going to get rid of. They're, they're just trees that grew over time, they're towards the back of people's properties against the roadway. So, those are not going to be that big of a deal, and they actually may look a little bit better. And whatever people are losing on their property, like in the front of their house, JCPNL is working directly with those homeowners to pick out trees to replace them. So, it's not going to be, it's going to be a tree for tree. And of course, any tree they don't replace, they're paying into the trust so we can plant trees in other places in town.
Yeah, so respectfully, I have a problem thinking that every time a town in New Jersey replaces a bunch of, let's say, a meaningful set of telephone poles, they're going to be at this height. So, do we know if there are plans to possibly connect maybe more powerful generation through these lines at some point? Do we have any idea? No?
That wasn't brought up to us, Jay.
Because it looks, it looks like we're potentially gearing up for some major power connections.
I think we might have been early, early in the setup with all of this because of all the power issues we've had over the several years with the trees and what have you. Obviously, you know, we were out with them for three hours, and nobody was looking forward to what they wanted to do on South Holland Road. But we sat there, they had the arborist with them, we sat there and we looked up and down the streets, and we went to location to location, and they agreed to move. And they, you know, I thought it was a great meeting because I think they could have just came in and said, well, we have the state's approval, this is what we're doing. But they didn't do that, so I'm kind of thankful for that.
I just hope one day we don't look back and say, wow, that was a mistake that we could have done else. And I'm not saying you could have, it's just a big concern, and more and more people are talking about it, and now you have this big equipment near the barn, I mean, it's, it's going to be really bad looking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Dave, come on up.
Hey, everybody. Dave Rampula, 39 Heather Hill Way. I want to thank you guys, you guys do a great job, and I appreciate you guys being here for all the time you're here. I have a quick question. Heather Hill Way was marked with for utilities, and it looked like curb repairs about a year ago. And the project wasn't done last year, and they said, my wife had called and they said it was going to do it this year, but we haven't seen anything thus far, and we were just, I was just curious, what's an update on that project? Does anybody?
Okay, Chris, please.
So, Heather Hill, I believe, is on our, I want to, I can't confirm it because I don't have it in front of me at this point in time, but I believe it's on our 2025, it's called Road Program, but because we did it a little late in the year, it's probably going to be 2025 into 2026, because we're bidding it now, we're working on getting that bid it out. But what happens is come November, the asphalt plants close down, right? So, if we don't get to it before then, it'll be the spring. If you call my office, I would say Thursday, because I'll know for sure, I can actually check the list and make sure that it's there and what we're doing on it. So, and if you wait till after the meeting, I'll give you all the information.
Sure, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Dave. Any other comments? Come on up, Pat. Patiently waiting.
Patrick Truski, 56 Line Road. Just a simple proposal, a quick one. This committee has done an excellent job of open spaces as committee beforehand. But one of the things in, that I'm realizing is that a lot of our open space isn't open to the public. And I think that with, when we acquire land, that it should be somehow that it's going to be useful to the public, not just one person or one business. So, with that, I'm going to make a proposal for the 40 acres that is not leased to De Palma for farming, that we make that into Walling Park for the 250th anniversary of the Revolutionary War. There's a Walling Cemetery in there, and there's four Revolutionary War veterans buried there. And very easily, that could be turned into Walling Park by just opening up the gate, taking down the Homedale Police Department's no trespassing sign, and using the new mower that we have to make a walking path around, the kind of thing. Very simple, very inexpensive, and it'll become a park. We're not, we didn't lease it for farming, and it'll be open to the public for a walking trail. There's 40 acres there, and that would make a nice one and a half, two-mile walking path, easily done. So, with that, and I would like to see that, that mindset go on if we acquire the Papa's Farm and the, geez, Potter's Field over there, that we somehow put the public's usefulness into it instead of, okay, it's going to be an animal reserve, but then maybe a walking path, a petting zoo for the children, something like that, that's easily done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Excellent suggestions, we will take it under advisement. Any other comments? Seeing none, how about a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?